I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Troutman if she'll lead us in the flag sleuth.
Thank you, I'd be honored, please stand. Cover your heart and begin.
By the United States of America. Public.
Will you please have a roll call Ms. Sanchez?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Burkhart?
Here.
Commissioner Ostrom?
Here.
Commissioner Troutman?
Here.
Chair Berger?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have approval of the agenda for this evening?
Approval?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We have some minutes from May 6th, I hope everyone had a chance to look at.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, thanks. At this time Maggie, will you give us the secretary's announcement?
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Santa Clarita Planning Commission. I would like to offer some information to help you understand how we conduct our meetings and how you can best participate. Agendas are on the back table listing the items the commission will consider tonight along with speaker cards. If you wish to speak on an item that is before the commission this evening, you must first fill out a speaker card. Please place your completed card in the tray or deliver it to me prior to the item being discussed. This will help the commission process public comments in an orderly manner. If you wish to submit written comments only, complete a green written comment card also located on the back table. When Chair Berger announces your name, please approach the podium to address the commission. Applicants have up to a total of 25 minutes to make their presentation to the commission. Each individual speaker will be given three minutes to make his or her comments indicated by a colored light on the commission dais. A green light appears when the speaker begins, a yellow light appears when 30 seconds remain, and a red light appears when the three minutes have expired. Your comments should be complete at this time, and to help keep our meeting running smoothly, please refrain from applause. Thank you.
Thank you Maggie. Okay, we'll start off this evening with item number one, and I'm going to turn this over if I can to Mrs. Weber.
Thank you Chair Berger, good evening Commissioners. Lisa Weber, Planning Manager with the city's Community Development Department. I want to start the item for Master Case 06157 by noting an error on the agenda. Staff's recommended action is actually to continue this matter to the June 3rd, 2008 Planning Commission meeting. At that meeting, we intend to bring to you, per the commission's direction, a resolution of denial for the proposed five lot subdivision, but we are not asking you to take that action tonight. So, the action before the commission this evening is to continue the matter to June 3rd.
Wonderful. Questions? No?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Burkhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Troutman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Chair Berger?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you Mrs. Weber. Okay, we're up to item number two. Item number two tonight is Case Planner Ben Jarvis, welcome Ben.
Thank you Chair Berger. The item before you tonight is Master Case 08-049, and this is the UDC Amendment -08-02, which is for the Downtown New Hall specific plan. The background for the Downtown New Hall specific plan, as you may recall, it was adopted back in 2005, and it was designed to create a mixed-use pedestrian-oriented development in the Downtown New Hall area. The plan allowed for buildings of mixed-use nature up to four stories in height in certain zones. It provided for a variety of housing types and was meant to be business-friendly streamlining the development process for those applicants that met the criteria of the specific plan. The Downtown New Hall specific plan is also the city's first form-based code, which means in addition to looking at the uses of the particular parcels of land, that we are also very interested and concerned in how the buildings looked and specific parameters of architecture and form. The Downtown New Hall area comprises 50 square blocks, we have a map on the screen for you here on the dais and people at home. It does have unique zoning that is only found in the Downtown New Hall area. P zones within New Hall are not found under other areas of the city, they're covered by the Unified Development Code. And again, as I stated, there are specific development standards within these zones. This is the first of what will be an annual specific plan update. This is essentially the same thing as the Unified Development Code annual amendments, but because this is a specific plan, it needs to be processed separately even though we are doing it tonight as a companion to the Unified Development Code amendments. The changes proposed for the Downtown New Hall specific plan this year are minor in nature. The changes clarify some typos, they would allow more options for specific sites in Downtown New Hall that meet certain criteria. It clarifies the original intent of the New Hall specific plan specifically along the lines of incorporating mixed uses in the Downtown New Hall area. It also reflects current economic realities. When the Downtown New Hall plan was adopted back in 2005, land costs were two to three times less expensive than what they are today. One of the things that the amendments would not do is that it would not change the overall number of housing units that were in the original adopted plan, nor would it allow for additional commercial square footage within the specific plan boundary area. It would also maintain the requirement for interior open spaces, courtyards, and that sort of thing for any new proposed projects. Going through the amendments in somewhat more detail, it clarifies, the amendments would clarify the relationship between the specific plan and the Unified Development Code. Specifically, when we adopted the New Hall specific plan, we assumed certain flexibilities in the plan. From day one, we always, we always assumed that we would have the variances, the adjustments, or conditional use permits like we do in other zones of the city. However, that language never made it into the plan specifically, so the amendments would actually put that language into the code. More specifically, and where this concerns the Planning Commission, is that this allows the Planning Commission to actually review projects that may not meet the exact criteria of the Downtown New Hall specific plan. So, an applicant could put together a conditional use permit application, bring it to the commission, and the commission could actually review that project. Another advantage to the proposed amendments is it would provide flexibility for housing within the spirit of the specific plan. Some housing types make sense on some parcels where if you go into the plan and look at that parcel, that particular housing type may not be allowed. So, this allows, again, more flexibility. Speaking about specific amendments within the urban center and corridor zone, and these are the two primary commercial zones within the plan, developments within these zones under the new amendments would be able to have penthouses that could range up to 25% of the building's first floor area. Now, this is a change over the existing code which allows for only a 10% penthouse. Full block projects would have greater flexibility, and the mixed-use overlay standards could be utilized within the Downtown New Hall specific plan subject to a minor use permit. And again, this was one of the assumptions that was made at the very beginning, but that language never actually made it into the specific plan itself. And then again, additional housing types and styles would be permitted subject to a minor use permit on certain parcels. Because the Downtown New Hall specific plan is a form-based code, we actually take a look, a closer look at specific building types. And in this case, for the commercial block and minor buildings, I spoke earlier about the flexibility on the full block projects. This here just states that where we had an applicant with a full block to develop, they would have greater flexibility in their commercial and housing options, and again, these changes are necessary because of the increased land values, property values in Downtown New Hall. However, the amendments would respect the existing development envelope that's listed in the plan, namely four stories in height. We would not be able to have anything beyond four stories without a hearing before the Planning Commission. The amendments also speak to the sign code. More options would be available by going through an enhanced signage program or a master sign program. And again, this was always flexibility that was assumed to be a part of the plan, but when we started looking at specific businesses, particularly businesses that had dual frontage on both Railroad Avenue and Main Street, we found that the plan did not actually state what could be approved with an enhanced signage application. And this would remedy that. As far as public noticing and outreach goes, these amendments were presented to the New Hall Redevelopment Committee in April, and a public notice was placed in the signal on April 29th. All noticing requirements have been met, and to date, we have not received any written comments or objections. A negative declaration was prepared for the amendments, and indeed, no impacts were found would be associated with the 2008 amendments. And again, just as a reminder, the amendments would not increase the number of housing units or the number of commercial square footage, and also, they would respect the adopted envelope. And with that, staff recommends that the commission open the public hearing, receive public testimony, and then adopt a resolution 08-11, which recommends that the city council adopt the negative declaration prepared for the project, and approve Master Case 08-049, which consists of the Unified Development Code Amendment 08-02, amending the Downtown New Hall specific plan as described in the attached Exhibit A. It's a mouthful. That concludes staff presentation, I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have for me.
Thank you Mr. Jarvis. Commissioners have any questions for staff?
I just have a real quick one on Unified Development Codes being embedded in these specific use plans, or later on, we're going to be talking about it in this one in particular. Are these, how are these administered? Are they done by rights? Are there the typical, are there the, the current checks and balances still maintained for conditional use permits?
You know what, I would argue that the amendments actually put the checks and balances back into the plan, or put them into the plan period. Before these amendments, we didn't have a vehicle listed specifically in the specific plan language that would allow us to do an adjustment or a variance, not even a vehicle to bring that up before the Planning Commission. So, in other words, if you had a property owner that needed a reduced setback, reduced anything, and there were findings to support that, and if that really made sense, a true, a hardline interpretation of the code would mean that that applicant would be out of luck. By doing the amendments now, we have that vehicle to be more flexible.
Yeah, but I think what I meant by checks and balances, and once you give it, can you take it away?
I would imagine that the specific plan could be amended, you know, annually, and if there was something that you as a commissioner wanted us to...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is recently, we've had the conditional use permits where we say, "You need to do this, this, and this, and if you don't do it, then you aren't going to get it," that type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I just want to make sure that there's, there's no by rights aspect to this, that there is this checks and balances, because sometimes if we could allow something to be done, it sounds good, but it doesn't work out the way you thought it would, and you still have people complaining, you know, noise, or, you know...
I'm trying really hard to like, give you a yes or no answer on that, but I'm not quite... Yes, the checks and balances are in the amendments.
Okay, they are, they're implied.
Yes.
And would it bring it back to the Planning Commission in those situations, or would it be on like a counter type thing?
Oh, no, a conditional use permit requires the approval of the Planning Commission, staff does not have the leeway to do that.
Okay, so in a specific plan, we would still approve the conditional use permit?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay, alright, good.
Commissioner Troutman?
Yes, I have a number of questions. So, with the approval of the New Hall specific plan, we said that the buildings could go up to 55 feet tall by right. Is that, was that what was in the original?
In the sections, no. In the sections of the Downtown New Hall specific plan that are within the mixed-use development overlay, the answer would be yes, subject to a minor use permit with the mixed-use overlay designation. The idea behind the plan and the assumption that staff had going forward was that the mixed-use overlay would apply, and in fact, it can apply in the Downtown New Hall area with a conditional use permit under the mixed-use ordinance. What the amendments here do is, what the amendments before you tonight do is to specifically reference that, removing any vagueness that was there.
Okay, but didn't I just hear that it's subject to a conditional use permit under the UDC for mixed use, but it's a minor use permit here?
Within the mixed-use overlay zone, you need a minor use permit in order to process a mixed-use project.
And that's in the UDC?
That's in the UDC. You can also do a mixed-use project within the city outside of the mixed-use overlay zone, subject to the issuance of a conditional use permit. And we've always assumed from day one that that applied to New Hall, we want the mixed-use projects down there, but when we went back to actually read the specific plan language, we didn't have any reference or any tie between the UDC of the Unified Development Code and the specific plan. This would, and this would change that and correct that.
Okay, so this will be with a which permit now, for Downtown New Hall, for the mixed-use overlay?
Within the mixed-use overlay would be a minor use permit, because portions of the Downtown New Hall specific plan area are also within the mixed-use overlay area. Those areas outside of the mixed-use overlay would require a conditional use permit and public hearing before the Planning Commission.
And if you could, on page three, I'm looking at, these are all head pages, give me an example of a building with a floor area ratio greater than 300%?
Floor area ratio, as measured in the Downtown New Hall specific plan, is a different calculation as measured elsewhere in the city, so we need to put that out first. We measure floor area ratio within the New Hall specific plan based on the first floor footprint. So, if you had a building with a thousand square foot first floor footprint, above 300% would be a building that would be 3,000 square feet.
Okay, so if you're, if it's greater than 300%, then we're talking about something that exceeds 55 feet tall?
No, you could actually exceed your, theoretically, you could exceed your allowable FAR and still be well under the 55-foot limit.
Okay, so you had mentioned before that, and it's in here too, that you would not be increasing the total commercial square footage under these rules, but if you, that's not the intent, but if we, if we were to approve something in excess of 55 feet, if that's something that can come before us, and that's something we'll, we'll end up approving more square footage. By making it possible for that, for that application to come in, as we allow here later on, we're allowing this to go up five or six stories and add square footage. So, we're leaving that door open.
Actually, no, we're not. The overall, the environmental impact report for the Downtown New Hall specific plan listed a specific number of commercial square footage that is permitted under the plan. So, this doesn't change those limits.
There's a note in here about housing types, let me see if I can find that.
Mm-hmm.
Housing types and residential uses that are not allowed in a particular zone but are allowed on differently zoned parcels, immediately adjacent that are deemed compatible by the Director of Community Development, may be allowed subject to the issuance of a minor use permit. So, what we've seen is the grid of the layout of residential and commercial and combined, that could be reorganized under the direction of the director, rather than coming back to the Planning Commission.
Well, no, a minor use permit requires public noticing and potentially a public hearing before the Planning Commission.
If there's...
If anyone opposes.
If there's a request.
And the Director of Community Development always has the option of referring a minor use permit to the commission for discussion. This particular change had its genesis in a proposal for a piece of property in the corridor zone. And the corridor zone is different from the urban center zone, not every, you have different kinds of housing types that are allowed in one zone versus the other. This particular piece of property, however, bordered what is known as the Urban General Two Zone and the Urban General One Zone, which are more residential zones in nature. And when this property owner came in, he actually had an idea to include townhomes on one side of the commercial proposed development, so that that would be a sensitive interface with the housing types right across the street. And we had to tell him, "No, you can't have townhomes, you have to have stacked apartment units." And his request back to us was, or his question back to us was, "Well, that just doesn't make sense in this area," and we're like, "Well, this is what the code says." So, this amendment here would allow us the opportunity to take that request, do a minor use permit. If there were no objections, we could actually go ahead and incorporate that specific kind of housing into that commercial development.
And what was the need that was served by increasing the penthouse from 10% to 25%? How did you arrive at 25 and not 35 or 40?
Again, there were assumptions made back in the original adoption of the code, and the 10% number was never meant to be a hard and fast, you know, this is all you can have. When we met with the architects and the consultants after the plan was adopted, and we brought this to their attention, they said, "Oh, no, no, you need to have, the ability to have a range, you know, maybe it's 5%, maybe it's 25% or 20%." But the code as written didn't allow us that flexibility, it said, you know, 10%. So, this will allow us to consider applications that have, you know, more flexibility. And in the case of some parcels, this is very important, because having that additional 10% square footage, say, on the second floor or the third floor, may make the difference between a project penciling and a project not penciling.
And this is again, urban center zone. Where feasible, property owners have the option to develop projects that conform to the city's mixed-use ordinance at the stated building heights of the city's mixed-use ordinance, subject to the issuance of a minor use permit if the project exceeds the heights listed in A or C above, and C again, is the 55-foot height. So, am I reading that correctly? That if we had a request for 55-foot, it would be minor use, and it would be subject to either a request from the public to have that coming before the Planning Commission, or it would be at the discretion of the director?
Actually, when it says that exceeds the heights listed in A or C above, that's specifically referring to A, where the maximum height is two and a half stories, or 35 feet.
Well, but C includes 55 feet.
Where an entire, where an entire block is to be developed, potentially.
So, that would be a minor use permit that may or may not come before the Planning Commission if we're talking about an entire block being raised to 65 or 75 or higher. That's how I'm reading that.
Yeah, I'm not reading it that way. You know, I may have to confer with that.
Think about that for a minute, because I, that to me, means that it doesn't come back, that we don't have those checks and balances, and that's a concern. And I can understand having some flexibility in this, so that you can come up with something unique, but I don't want to see it get out of the range of the Planning Commission.
And this is actually what the existing mixed use, it's consistent with the mixed-use ordinance, and it's consistent with the intent of the plan. So, I see what you're saying, certainly that's not the intent of this language. And the other thing to keep in mind is that where an entire block is to be developed, you're going to, you're going to see that project. There's no way that an entire block could be developed permitted by right in Downtown New Hall, it just, I can't see that happening. Lisa might overrule me on that, but, you know, this is adding flexibility into the, into the code, and I just, I can't tell you for sure that it's impossible, but the likelihood would be extremely impossible.
I think if I could, the intent of these modifications was to incorporate into the, two things, into the specific plan. The first thing is, with respect to a property that is within the mixed-use overlay, as well as the Downtown New Hall specific plan, we want to make clear that the mixed-use overlay height restrictions, et cetera, are going to apply, and processes are going to apply. And that's, I think, what D is aiming at. C is aiming at, we also want to recognize that where an entire block is being developed, in or outside of the mixed-use overlay, that there's the potential for it to go to 55 feet. I think that was the intent of these two sections. If that's not clear, we can work with the language to make it clearer. But the intent was not to, with D, wasn't to do anything more than the mixed-use overlay ordinance already does, it's just we wanted to reflect it in the specific plan so everybody understood. The sequence of events was that this Downtown New Hall specific plan was adopted, and then subsequent to that, the mixed-use overlay ordinance was adopted. So, it wasn't clear necessarily that mixed-use overlay, which applies in the Downtown New Hall specific area geographically, because it was adopted afterwards, would apply in the Downtown New Hall specific plans, we're trying to make that express.
Okay, but the mixed-use overlay caps it at 55 feet, and a minor use permit would be needed for going over?
The mixed-use overlay, I don't know what the height limit is in the mixed-use overlay.
55 feet is the height?
Yeah.
The minor use permit.
With a minor use permit. Now, someone could apply for a conditional use permit to go higher.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it does require a conditional use, that it does come back, that it's not something that would be subject to someone's complaining and bringing it forward, or at the discretion of the director. I think there has to be conditional use permits that's required if you're exceeding that 55-foot.
Yes, and that's, that's what it is.
If you're exceeding 55 feet, that's correct.
This does not make it clear, it says, "Subject to the issuance of a minor use permit if the project exceeds the heights listed in," and C is 55. So, that to me says that it's a minor use permit, and I'd like to see that changed to conditional. So, I looked at that one. Question on page 10.
Page 10 of...
Let me see, I think that that was the 300 foot, so I think I have that, okay, so I have that one answered, you answered that earlier, thank you. Let me move on to handwritten page 30, under aesthetics. "As buildings would be subject to the four-story limit called out in the DNSP, and would remain consistent with the development envelope identified in the specific plan." Okay, but then that still is the 55-foot height, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think that's all of my questions, thank you Mr. Chair.
Okay, and maybe Mr. Montez can help you change the wording of that, so that it comes out a little bit better. Any other questions of staff at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a question. I'd like to hear from staff, the rationale for, for your raising the height to 55 feet if you have a block... if you have a block development. And where I'm coming from here is where I've seen multi-story buildings, and I think we've seen in architecture, they're more interesting when we have a little breakup, if you will, in the roof line along the way, and we have varying heights down the block, rather than, than the consistent height all the way down. And in fact, it's one of the reasons I, I'm in favor of your change to the tower and penthouse regulation, it allows them up to, to vary the size more, because I think that'll produce more architectural interest. But why, what was the rationale in determining that there should be a 55-foot-tall restriction permitted by right if they go with a whole block development? Where, where staff coming from there?
Well, the height limit in the mixed-use overlay zone is 55 feet. So the staff intent was to make, across the board, the downtown New Hall specific plan and the mixed-use overlay zone consistent.
That was, that was it, solely it, just for consistency?
Okay, correct, thanks.
Sure.
I have one more question. This is really general, and I was going to bring it up in the next discussion on UDC. In my reading about planning, I've seen conditional use permit used, and temporary use, and minor use, applying just to uses, not to structures. Wouldn't it be more appropriate to be calling these variances? And that, I was going to ask you about those definitions in the UDC, the variances, you know, versus adjustments. It's not a use, it's a, it's a structure. So at some point, I think we need to take a look at that and see what's most appropriate.
Well, the terms variance and adjustments have very specific meanings in, in code language. And a variance is typically tied to a physical condition of a specific piece of property. And, and because of the conditions of that property, there's a need to vary from the standards established in the development code. And so provisions for buildings exceeding certain heights, as permitted in, in a specific plan, or in the code, or with a conditional or minor use permit, wouldn't necessarily be a hardship based on the physical constraints of the property. They're really two different types of tools and two different types of entitlements.
A variance looks at the physical characteristics of the property that's being developed. A conditional use permit or a minor use permit looks at the impact of the use on surrounding properties. So a variance, you want to deviate from the standards that normally apply to development because of something unique about that particular property, its configuration, its lot size, its topography, whatever. And if you can't determine that there's something unique about that property that justifies deviating from the normal standards that apply to all properties, you shouldn't be issuing a variance. Alternatively, a conditional use permit, or a conditionally permitted use, or is, is a use where you're looking at the use that is intended, whether it's a mixed-use building, or whether it's a church operation, or whatever. The use term is a little broader than just the use that's being made of the property. It also applies to the physical characteristics of the building, depending on what the building is being used for. But you're focused not on the building necessarily, as you are on the surrounding uses. And so rather than permit it by right, you're going to want to look at it first, to see what the impacts on surrounding uses are, and see if there are conditions you need to apply to that use, to ensure that you can mitigate the impacts on surrounding uses. So it's a completely different focus.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Troutman, I just want to clarify for you as well, that any structure exceeding 55 feet in height would require a conditional use permit, and that would require consideration by the planning commission. So I, I do want to make that clear. Really, the downtown New Hall specific plan, the reason why we went through that process and did the, the level of SEQA work that we did, and the level of analysis, and the level of detail that you see in the code component of that plan, is to allow for this element of flexibility, to really entice the redevelopment of that downtown New Hall core. And since the implementation, since the adoption of that plan, we've had dozens of conversations with various development parties. And they've been very candid in their comments to us about the provisions of this code, and what really works for them and what doesn't, and what they feel was really designed in a vacuum, and, and doesn't really reflect current development practices, and, and wouldn't really be feasible in a, in a true development project. So the, these amendments in general are intended to address that, to hopefully incentivize these developers to come back and work with us to develop these projects. But I understand your concern about the level of review and, and of both the planning commission and the city council.
Well, I think it's important, because a lot of people in talking about the downtown New Hall specific plan are very concerned that it's going to turn into something that no one anticipated. We talked about various areas, Myrtle, it was a Myrtle Street in Monrovia and other areas like that, and what that sort of image evokes. And I think that that's more of the image that people are looking for, and I know that they're very concerned that it's going to turn into something gargantuan and, and out of step with the neighborhood. So I want to make sure that they have those assurances, that we're gonna, that that was the intent, and that's what we're going toward.
Okay, any other questions or comments to staff? Okay, what we'll do is we'll open up the public hearing, and we do have, let's see, we have Sandra Catell. Thanks for coming out tonight.
I appreciate having the opportunity to talk to you all tonight. Now, Sandra Catell, I'm a resident of New Hall for 29-plus years, almost 30. I've been very involved in community activities, and I, I work with the city, with the city, on many, many things. I'm a little more aware of what's going on than just most people, not terribly involved in everything, just a little bit more aware. But I really didn't know until just now about some things that are going on right now. I'm a little amazed about what's going on in little old New Hall, that we're going to have penthouses, I'm kind of excited. Suddenly, we're like downtown, downtown New York City. The development of a city or a town, if I remember, starts out as small groups of, of homes, gets to some sort of town center, one or two stories. Eventually, it progresses up to two to four stories. This building here, I believe, is about 35 to 40 feet tall. To me, this is a very large building, this would be pretty much as tall as I would like to see in downtown New Hall and the development. When you talk about nothing more than four stories, and yet in the same breath you say you're going to have a height limit of 55 feet, I believe that 55 feet is more than four stories in many instances. So I'm kind of concerned about this, is that going to be the norm? If somebody comes in and puts in a big block project, I heard the other night that somebody wanted to put in a, a very nice senior housing development, I just don't want them to put a giant, you know, 55-foot brick on that lot. I, I do think 55 feet is kind of a little much for little old downtown New Hall, which was originally just going through, you know, redevelopment, and instead, it seems like New Hall's disappearing, and something else is taking its place. And I'm very sad about that. I'd also like to know how this is going to all work with the potential of a Lyons Railroad crossing. I know I'm beating a dead horse here, because everybody's saying, we don't know if that's going to go through, it will, it won't, I don't know. But the concept of raising Railroad Avenue, I think we need to really think about this. So that you can have an at-grade crossing on Lyons, means building up Railroad Avenue somewhere around five feet or more, and then you'd have to raise Lyons to meet it. Then you'd have to raise Main Street to match up with Lyons. And what's going to happen to all the traffic on Railroad while this is going on? Where's it going to go? You've taken away Main Street, New Hall Avenue is not going to be able to absorb the, what 100,000 cars that make the trip from Bokeh Junction down? And I'm really concerned about all of this. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments tonight. That was all we had from the public side. Do you want clarification on that, possibly, if we have?
I did have an opportunity to look at the mixed-use overlay ordinance that's in the code right now, and it does indicate that for any mixed-use project within the mixed-use overlay, a minor use permit is required. So again, to look at the impacts on surrounding. For anything in excess of 55 feet, a conditional use permit would be required. So we will make sure that the language in this section tracks that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Montez. Okay, more discussion from the, my commissioners? No? Entertain a motion if somebody...
We approve the proposal as submitted by staff, with the condition that 4.206-0, sub-paragraph 1D, is going to be changed to reflect the fact that a conditional use permit will be required, rather than a minor use permit, as indicated in the draft.
Yes, and just a point of clarification, I think it should say a mixed-use permit or conditional use permit as required by the mixed-use, because...
There's two different heights.
There's two different standards. Anything below 55 is supposed to be mixed use, or is supposed to be a minor use, anything above 55 is supposed to be a conditional use permit. The only other question I would ask for clarification on the motion is with respect to D1C, I think the intent in D1C is if you're going to take an entire block, you would, it's, it's an as-right development to 55 feet, as opposed to a minor use permit. So I want to make sure that the commission understands that's what the language says. So if you're taking part of a block, and you're under 55 feet, it's a minor use permit. If you're taking part of a block, and it's over 55 feet, it's a conditional use permit. If you're taking the whole block, and you're under 55 feet, it's nothing. If you're taking, it's as-right. If you're taking a whole block, and you're over 55 feet, it's a conditional use permit.
Okay, and you said that that will be clarified in this?
Yes, by adding the minor use permit or conditional use permit as required by the mixed-use ordinance.
Okay.
Okay?
So modify my motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Ostrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Troutman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Burkhart?
Yes.
Chair Berger?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jarvis, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Getting set up for item number three here.